Good evening, the time being seven PM, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Protem Smith? Councilmember Gilbert?
Here.
Councilmember Patassie?
Here.
Councilmember Kettering?
Here.
And Mayor Barrios?
Here. Please know, all five of us are here this evening. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation provided by Clifton Curry of Mountain View Church.
Aye. With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we are grateful for this community of Oakdale. We're grateful for the people that serve. I can think of a lot of things I'd rather do on a cold, wet night, but they're here serving us, hopefully making plans that better our community. And so we pray for wisdom and guidance and protection. Thank you for those that serve us and protecting us, that try to make wise decisions. Lord, we just pray for this time together, that it be peaceful and that we could, again, just see Oakdale prosper and have your blessing in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen, thank you. Alright, so at this time, I would like to call up Jane to the mic. Good evening, Jane. I'm gonna go ahead and let you talk for a little bit and give us your spill, and then we're gonna recognize you.
Wow. Colleen, will you set the timer for twelve and a half minutes?
Absolutely, absolutely.
The other day at the holiday party, she's like, oh, Colleen's not here to set the timer for me to talk, so...
So I talked endlessly, and it was all your fault. Alright, well, good evening, Mayor.
It's because a Raider game's on right now, and you're a Packer fan, that's what's happening.
The Packers won, so it's all good. Alright, so this appears to be a safe distance. Although now I can't see my notes, because I didn't bring my glasses. Alright, so if you don't know, I am retiring after seven, only seven years with the city. I am not gonna cry. Time has gone very quickly. I say all the time that I have the best job in the city of Oakdale. If you don't know me, I started out as a recreation coordinator, managing the senior center, the pool, special events. For whatever reason, Brian thought, hey, I bet she could handle facilities too. And so about two years ago, I became the supervisor for recreation. Facilities folded into that, which included the rentals and the custodians, all kinds of fabulous things. I remember my first day, I met with Albert, and I said, do you wanna meet weekly, monthly? Nah, just come in when you need something. Which worked perfectly for my style, and I want you to know that Albert has been so supportive. Anything I need, as long as it's in the budget, he has provided. During the pandemic, the senior center was closed for eighteen months, and so I started doing Zoom classes with seniors on my little tiny cellphone. And I mentioned that to Albert one day, like, phew, that is not easy. A couple of days later, Albert showed up with a laptop. And so we did, and I'm sure it was in the budget. And so we did Zoom classes for seniors with a laptop. And so, Albert, thank you. Thank you for supporting me, leaving me alone to do my job, that was pretty fantastic. Brian, you were always there, whether it was text message, email, showing up at your office unannounced. I truly appreciate all of your support and backup, especially when there was a senior very angry with me. You provided the support that I needed, and occasionally jumped in to run interference if needed, so thank you for that. Stop that, Jane. Again, best job in the city. I got to work with teenagers during the summer, as we hired lifeguards. And I took that job very seriously, because they were sixteen, seventeen years old. For most of them, it was their first job, and I wanted to make sure that they learned how to have a job, and what a good job and a good boss would look like. And so I hope I modeled that at least ninety percent of the time. I loved doing the special events and the rentals, because I got to meet so many community members. And it was really wonderful doing that outreach, and seeing what a close-knit, wonderful community that Oakdale is. But of course, my heart is with the senior center. And all of those seniors, I remember getting very close with a senior, and he passed, and it was probably one of the hardest days ever in my work life. My seniors are my family, and I will miss almost all of them. I will miss them all. I've already started getting Facebook friend requests from them, so that'll be fun. Darn it for teaching them how to use iPads and Facebook. Came back to bite me, didn't it? But so, so good. I am only leaving because of my daughter. You can blame her if you're sad that I'm going, because she gave birth to two of the most amazing little human beings you have ever seen. I brought a photo. Who could not, who could not wanna go back home to this, right? Here, back in the back.
For the people at home, right?
So Walker is three, Magnolia is eight months, and they have my entire heart. And so I'm going home to watch them grow up, spoil them, make my daughter angry because I'm spoiling them. But that, that is my plan. What I'm leaving you with, though, and what I think I did best for the city, what my best skill is, and I promise I'm wrapping up. What I did best is recognize and develop and support talent. I'm leaving you with two amazing people sitting back there. And this is actually in my notes, guys, I'm not making this. Tim and Alana. Hiring them was my, I hope is my legacy, because they are amazing. You can teach people skills, how to do a job. You can't teach work ethic, and passion, and kindness, and teamwork. I hope that I've modeled that for both of them. Yes, okay, I got thumbs up. And so Tim will be doing the facilities part, Alana has the recreation. They are amazing. It will be Jane Hu in just a couple of months.
Oh, I don't think so.
And I'll keep in touch. But again, thank you. Thank you for your support, thank you for seven amazing years. I will miss you all, but I'll send Alana and Tim so many photos that they can, that they can share, until they block my number, so... That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Jane, well, I just wanna personally thank you for always being kind and very patient, especially trying to teach me some stuff on the iPad. Very patient, and just always being there. Anytime we've needed anything, we text you, call you, and I don't know what you say on the other end, but you make it happen. And our senior center is the best, and I've heard that from many seniors and family members. We have the best senior center, and I attribute that to you, and of course, your crew over there, Alana and Tim. So thank you for your leadership, thank you for your dedication to the city of Oakdale, and especially to our seniors, most of them. And just wanna say we wish you all the best, and have fun with your hubby, and your grandkids, and the Green Bay Packers, and we will definitely see you on Facebook, so we appreciate you very much. Thank you, Jane.
Thank you.
And if I could just add to that, Jane, thank you. Albert and I have really appreciated all the great work that you've done at the senior center in particular. I know it doesn't just go there, but I know how important the senior center is for our community. Our seniors love being there, it's very valuable to them. They're proud that they get to go there, and you've been able to put on fabulous programs. You've been able to help foster relationships, bridge gaps. I think it's amazing, the ability that you and your team have had to help teach the valuable skills of technology, to help connect some of our seniors with so many resources that they would not have otherwise been able to get in touch. If not for your efforts to bring in the grants and to get them the iPads. And that's just one of many things that you've been able to do, but it's just been an honor and a privilege to work with you and to learn from you. And I just can't help but wish you and your family and your beautiful grandchildren the best going forward, so congratulations.
Would anyone else like to say something?
Don't stand up yet.
Would anyone else like to say something to Jane?
First off, you still owe me three dollars. I wanna apologize for taking like three years to get your name pronounced correctly.
Say it.
Jane. But you know, you know what I'm gonna say, I think, is because I've worked with you, next to you, all of those meals and all of those volunteers. Alana has already, you know, brought me into that loop, and I wouldn't do it if I didn't enjoy it. And I enjoy it because the seniors enjoy it, and the seniors enjoy it because of what you put together for them. And that's a big thing. I mean, you could, you could just click the right buttons on a piece of paper and make it happen, or you could be involved and do all of the extra levels of care for the seniors that you did for them. And that's what they feel when they're in that center. And it's nice to be able to walk into that room and know what people think, and how happy they are to be cared by the three of you. And that's a big pin to have on your shoulder as you walk through life. They knew how much you cared for them, or they know how much you care for them. And I do too. I wanna say thank you for doing that for our seniors. I mean, you're an awesome person, you really are. Thank you.
Anyone else?
It takes someone who is very patient and compassionate to work with our senior community, and you and Alana demonstrate that every single day. And I really appreciate everything that you've done in the last seven years, Jane. You are just an incredible woman, and I really look up to you for all that you've done for our community. Thank you so much.
Alright.
Yeah, that's enough.
Alright, here we go. Is that your three minutes are up? We went way over the twelve you requested.
Come on in. Hug first, okay.
Always.
Always, alright.
Eddie?
And do you like the?
Whatever you wanna do.
The prom photo?
Right, wanna get in the middle? Teamwork. What about your husband? What about your husband?
Yeah, can we say Packers?
Yeah, Packers, yeah.
Go Packers! Come on, honey, go Pack, go! No, he's too tall. Go Pack, go!
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Alright. Alright, now's the time for public comment. Anyone wishing to provide public comment, please step up to the mic, and you will have three minutes. State your name. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Nerves.
That's okay, that's okay, don't worry about it.
And I think alone. I was hoping to have others here for support.
Can you pull that microphone down to the level?
This is my first time.
That's okay, we're here to help you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Is that good now?
Yep.
Okay. Hello, good evening. My name is Jeannie McDaniel. I live here in Oakdale, I own a home. I live, I've moved here, let me find my notes, I'm really nervous right now. I moved here twenty-one years ago almost, from Modesto where I was raised, and I own a rescue dog and a rescue kitty. Whom I love very much. I'm here tonight to talk about the homeless animal crisis in our community. It's not just a moral issue. It's not just an I love animals and I feel sorry for them issue. It's also a community safety issue, and it's a community safety problem, and it's out of control. I have talked to so many people, I walk my dog every day, and I talk to people on the streets, I talk to my neighbors, I talk to my friends, and they're all concerned. They're all concerned about everything, and they're all complaining, and we're all complaining about it. But complaining doesn't get anything done, and it doesn't get anything accomplished. And so I wanted to come and talk about it, because I feel that it's a problem. I didn't even write it all down, because I just felt like maybe nobody cared. You know? It's just, and I'm standing here alone, thinking I had people that were coming to support me, and I don't think they're here. So I do feel alone. I don't want to be here. I'm not a public speaker, I hate this. I hate this, I can't wait till it's over, I can go home and worry about everything I said and didn't say. I've been nervous about it all day. I've been afraid I would cry. I've been afraid I would yell. I've been afraid I would cuss. I don't wanna do any of those things. All I wanna do is ask for your help. Please. I just wanna ask for your help. We need the resources to get this community problem under control, and we're a small town. We're not Modesto with two hundred, I don't even know what the population is there, but we're not, we don't have the population. We can do it here. Am I out of time already?
So Jeannie, is this something that has ever been called into the police department, or is this a certain area that you're talking about?
I've called a number of times.
Is it a specific colony that you're talking about?
I can tell you all kinds of things. I can tell you how afraid I've been to walk my dog because of all the off-leash dogs on the streets, because people are dumping their dogs, since COVID especially. During COVID, when people were home, they took in dogs.
And what areas is this happening in? Because I walk miles, I walk dozens of miles, I've never been...
I live on River Bluff, it happens in my neighborhood, I walk through Virtual Hill, I walk, I walk a lot. I love my dog.
And when it happens, do you call Animal Control or the Police Department?
One of the things that sticks with me is the day, it was around Fourth of July. It was not Fourth of July, and there were illegal fireworks, illegal fireworks, that sound like bombs going off. I was in my car, I wasn't walking, I was in my car, and the dog was going on Valley View, and I was coming back to my home. And I saw this beautiful dog, and I thought it had just escaped. I couldn't hear the fireworks, because I had music blaring in my car, and I thought, oh, I'm one of those that always pulls over. I gotta save him, right? I gotta get, find the owner, I gotta do it, you know? So I pulled over to help the dog, and that's when I started hearing the illegal fireworks. And she was panting and scared, and bless her heart, the dog didn't run away from me, which is often the case, you know, they're so panicked. She was panting really hard, and I called the non-emergency number, and I was told no one was available, we're sorry, there's no one to come. I didn't have a leash with me, I was in my car. I now keep a leash in my car at all times. And I had that dog. And I had to let her go.
Are you on social media?
Do, am I on social media? I posted what I was, my concerns on the Nextdoor Neighborhood app, asking people to come and support me tonight.
Are you on Facebook?
I'm not on...
Because...
Technically, I have a Facebook account, but I don't do Facebook.
I'm bringing this up specifically to tell you that
Pardon?
Lost and found animals in Oakdale are posted on Facebook, much, much more than they are on the Nextdoor app. So people are looking for animals on Facebook, on the Oakdale Lost and Found page. People are posting that I've lost my dog on Facebook, on the Oakdale Lost and Found page. So that might be a better avenue for you to address the situation.
I'm not so much concerned about the lost dogs, I'm concerned about animals in general, always.
And what is your...
I'm concerned about the dumping. Are any of you on the Nextdoor Neighborhood app? Have you looked on there? Have you seen what's going on? Just yesterday, after I started this conversation five days ago, six days ago, there were six puppies that were assumed to be dumped in the country.
That was on social media as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
There are pregnant dogs, there was a pregnant, a mother dog that was dumped. I believe she had eleven puppies.
Do you have a...
That had no homes.
Do you have a proposed solution for the council? Do you have...
We need more shelter space. We need people to be able to get their animals in to be spayed and neutered. That is a huge problem, is people not spaying and neutering their pets, whether it's cats or dogs. I have a rescue cat and a rescue dog, I don't know if I told you. I'm not, I love all animals. But some of the people that are in rescues have shared with me that, you know, part of the problem is, they get a, people get a pet, and then they can't get in for months to get their animals spayed or neutered because of the backlog.
So Chief, do you have any, Chief, do you have any advice for Ms. McDaniel's? Or should we get her a number, and maybe you set a time to talk with her, or maybe the... Do you wanna go ahead and leave your number with Colleen, and the chief will give you a call, or one of his team, team members can reach out to you? If you wanna go ahead and leave it with Colleen, we'll be happy to get somebody to call you, talk to you more about the issue.
I, excuse me for interrupting. I don't know if you were aware, about eight, nine months ago, the Animal Shelter Subcommittee, was that a year ago?
The Animal Shelter what?
Subcommittee, we put a Subcommittee together to address these very topics.
You did?
And we made great progress with it, actually.
What progress is being made?
Well, that's it.
So, would you mind if I kinda chimed in? Coincidentally, later in the meeting, we were going to talk about some of the efforts that Animal Control, through the Police Department, is working on, you know, joining partnerships with the Astro Foundation and Best Friends Animal Society to do exactly what you're talking about, you know? You know, from neuter and vaccination and that type of thing. So we recognize that there's a variety of things that we need to work on, and we're committed to working forward to try to do those steps, and I'm sorry you've had to endure, you know, some of the things that you've had to endure. And I appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts with us, and if you don't mind sharing your number with Colleen, and we'll have either the chief or a member of the Police Department to give you a call and kinda learn more about the situation.
Are you familiar, Jeannie, with Astro Foundation?
Yes, I actually was volunteering with them until I got ill in August, and then I had to stop.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Why don't you go ahead and give Colleen your number?
Just, I wanted to share a real quick story. I went out to the Oakdale Animal Shelter not too long ago. Part of what's been fueling all this emotion that I have is, I've been looking for another dog, because my dog is a senior now. And I went out and met this wonderful, sweet, sweet dog at the shelter, and the officer there was very nice and welcoming, and I took my dog out to meet this dog, and when they took the dog in, it was dumped on the street, they assumed. Nobody claimed it, wasn't chipped. Nobody claimed it. And it was thin. Then it gained weight while it was in the shelter, and then because of the stress of being in the shelter, he was losing weight. And that's another thing, is that these dogs are sitting in the shelter, and a shelter is not a good place for an animal. Dogs do grieve. When my other dog died, I watched my dog grieve. I couldn't even grieve, because I felt so bad for my dog. I had to like be there for my dog while she grieved. My dog, I had her put down at my home, which was fabulous. Not fabulous, but at least I did, she was home, you know, and my dog got to be there with her, but they do grieve, and they feel, and... I don't know, I don't know what else to say.
Yeah, if you please...
I just hope that you'll help.
If, thank you for letting us know, and thank you for coming here. Please leave your information, and then like our city manager said, later on in the agenda, we will be discussing part of this stuff. So you're welcome to stay and listen to that as well. Alright, anyone else for public comment? Come on up, please state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
That was good timing, thank you for the segue. I'm Jay Dean Vicenti, I'm the founder and president of Astro Foundation, Jeannie, and we actually are doing quite a bit to address, at the very least, the community cat problem. We are currently actually working with the City of Oakdale Animal Control on a community cat management program. So just to give you a little high-level overview about what a community cat program looks like, I'll try to keep it to three minutes. Good cat colonies make good neighbors. The goal is to create a harmonious relationship between community cats and the people and businesses around them. In well-managed colonies, cats are like a good roommate, right? They're quiet, seldom seen, and without annoying habits. The only way to achieve this, though, is through TNR, which is Trap, Neuter, Return, and Responsible Colony Management. Why do TNR? Unsterilized colonies present a host of animal welfare concerns, including high cat and kitten mortality, cats getting hit by cars, yowling, fighting, and spraying, which are often behaviors that accompany mating. So sterilization dramatically reduces many of these issues, while ultimately reducing the cat population. Just trapping and removing cats, killing them, doesn't work. It creates what's called a vacuum effect. If cats are removed from their outdoor home, it creates a territorial opening or vacuum that will not remain empty. Just removing cats from an area might cause a temporary decrease in the cat population, but more cats will take their place, and it doesn't take long. So that's just an expensive deadly cycle, which really doesn't yield positive long-term results, and does create ill will in the community. So trap, neuter, release is really the only way to humanely stabilize these cat populations and get them under control permanently. And then it's also just important to have colony cat caretakers. We started doing this over the past year with the support of City of Oakdale Animal Control at the Costless Shopping Center here in town, and we have trapped and spayed-neutered over fifty feral cats, which is huge. We've also been able to find through that process a lot of fairly tame kittens and cats that have been dumped, that we were able to then take and re-home through Astro Foundation and just get them out of there entirely. And it's important to have a colony caretaker on site to be able to feed them and manage them daily to do this, because if you don't have someone there every day, then you don't know when a new cat or kitten has been dumped, or, oh, there's one that doesn't have an ear tip that needs to be fixed. So having people on site every day to feed in a responsible manner is super important, so that way we can spot the newcomers and just keep a handle on it, so it's like having an apartment manager, but for cats. But anyway, so I just did wanna assure you, there you are, people do care, and we are doing a lot to address the situation. Oftentimes get puppies dumped right in our little front yard, too, and, you know, it's just, there's my three minutes. My husband is gonna want one of these.
I love that.
Thank you.
Jay Dean, Jay Dean, Jay Dean, you've been doing this for years, and I don't think, I don't think there's a proper amount of thank yous to throw your way for the amount that you do.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, it takes a, it takes a village, we have a lot of really, really wonderful volunteers, support from the City of Oakdale and Oakdale Animal Control, support from the community, some good employees, too, so it takes a village.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone else for public comment? Come on up, please state your name. Hello.
My name's Mary Brown.
Come on up to the... You'll state your name right here, ma'am. Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Mary Brown, and I came up here to support you. And my, my issue, I mean, I agree with what the others have said, but what really bothers me is there seems to be this subculture here, not just in Oakdale, but in probably the entire Central Valley. Valley, to, it's okay to trap cats and dump them. And they don't care. It could be your neighbor's cat or whatever. They just take them out, and they dump them here in the city, in the city parks. And they also take them out, you have probably heard about Fox Grove. You may have seen the horrible pictures on Nextdoor. The problems with dumping cats, people missing their cats, is so rife on Nextdoor that I'm about ready to quit. I can handle it. And I don't know how this could be addressed, other than some sort of public outreach or public education. It is not okay to trap an animal and take it out and dump it out at Lake Don Pedro, or Fox Grove, or a city park, or wherever. This seems to be a go-to solution for many people. It's like a subculture here. And I, I don't know. I wish I could say, I have an answer for you, but I don't know. But I guess, one of the, the best way, spay and neuter, spay and neuter. And there needs to be an outreach on that, and it needs to be timely and affordable. Because the amount of animals that are just being dumped, you know, especially kittens and puppies, is, people just have them, they don't get their pets spayed, and then before they know it, the puppies and the kittens are breeding. And I see this on Nextdoor all the time. And I don't know what I can do, except come here and tell you about it. If you're not on Nextdoor, realize, maybe you don't have enough time, but it's bad. Okay, I won't say anymore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
All right, anyone else for public comment? Public comment is now closed. All right, City Council Consent Agenda. Would a council member like to pull an item to discuss? If not, this is an action item.
I don't need to pull anything. I'd just like to point out that the Dawn Osborne Memorial Run, the annual run, is February first of next year. And I motion to move the consent agenda forward.
I second that motion.
First and a second roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Potassie?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios?
Yes, this item passes 5-0. Thank you, Colleen. All right, next up, staff reports of the City Council. Consider a resolution authorizing the City of Oakdale Animal Services to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Best Friends Animal Society and Astro Foundation for our community cat program.
Councilmembers, Mayor, thank you for having me here today. This is going to be a presentation on establishing...
Pull that, you'll pull that mic up. Apologize. Thumb drive.
Oh. Sorry for the technical difficulties. This is a presentation on establishing a MOU between Best Friends Animal Society, Astro Foundation, and the Oakdale Animal Services. This is in regards to establishing a community cat program through a grant through Best Friends. This initiative is expected to improve the survival rate, reduce the burden on the shelter, and create a sustainable pathway for cat management in Oakdale and the contracted cities. Best Friends Animal Society has committed a $50,000 grant to support this program. This will be used to train staff, provide resources, and develop strategies to implement the project. The C, the Community Cat Program will focus on several areas. It's going to be sterilization, vaccination, and also providing felines with their, their shots, ear tipping them, and then returning them back to their community. The program will also allow for both sheltered, what they, what they call it, SNVR and TNVR, services for the City of Oakdale and the contracted cities. The public outreach is the important part. Best Friends will provide materials such as door hangers and flyers, and educate the public on the Community Cat Program, to include also nuisance mitigation and how to be a responsible pet owner. Responsibilities and roles. Best Friends Animal Society will provide the grant, $50,000, and this will also include in-person or virtual training, marketing resources, and they'll also hold a monthly meeting to address any challenges. Astro Foundation will obviously be doing the majority of it. They'll administer the cat, cat community program, ensuring the cats receive the necessary vaccinations and care, and facilitate the intake diversion of healthy outdoor cats. For the City of Oakdale Animal Shelter, we will support the Community Cat Program by allowing Astro Foundation to access impounded cats, ensuring the program's eligibility cats are not being tested unnecessarily, and updating any relevant policies in regards to the program. The expected outcomes, we hope to improve our feline survival rate and narrow the life-saving gap for cats in Oakdale, in our contracted cities, reduce the intake of stray cats to the shelter, creating a more efficient use of shelter resources, and a humane approach to population control. The strengthened partnership between the City of Oakdale, Astro, and Best Friends should enable us to have a more efficient operation and reduce resource sharing for the benefit of the community. There is no anticipated fiscal impact. This grant will be $50,000. It should cover all operational costs, trainings, and marketing expenses. The staff recommends that the City Council adopt this resolution, entering into a MOU between Astro, Best Friends, and the City of Oakdale Animal Services. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the public? All right, council?
This is great. Is there a representative from the, not Astro, we know Astro's here, but Best Friends here?
No, they're, they're actually based out of Utah.
Okay.
But they're, they're a nation, their goal is, they call themselves the Oakdale Nation. Their goal is to try to help municipalities across the country reduce their infirmity rates of cats and dogs.
So, is it you and your organization that reached out and got this grant?
Particularly, you've got the overall, yeah.
Thank you.
But, but the City of Oakdale's been very instrumental, the City of Oakdale Animal Services, have been very instrumental in pursuing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for council?
Yes.
Does this address the dumping of dogs and the homeless dog problem that we're having?
This grant is for the Community Cat Program.
It's strictly cat?
Yes.
I thought I saw.
All right.
I can't imagine saying no to this. I'm definitely, this is a yes or an 11 dot one?
I second that motion for 11 dot one.
First and a second roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Potassie?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios?
Yes, passes 5-0. Thank you for getting that grant. Yes.
I think it's just a short break to ask the chief. I wrote him a question. He answered the question. Can you address this on the mic for everybody?
So, he has, he had, do you want to ask a question? Do you want to ask the question?
The question is, is the act of trapping your neighbor's animal illegal?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay.
But you cannot dump the animal. That is illegal. And we will arrest if we establish probable cause for illegal dumping of any animal.
So, the dumping portion?
The dumping part is the illegal portion.
Okay.
So, if somebody traps, traps a cat, it's probably going to be a neighbor's cat, or it's going to be a feral cat. They'll bring it to us, and we'll be able to establish. That's why microchipping is so important. If people microchip their cats, and it's trapped and brought to us, we do everything that we possibly can to get it back to its owner. Microchip your cats.
So, dumping it, I mean, if people don't know already, maybe we put something in the, the water bill that says dumping is illegal? I mean, it should be common sense. But if the word's not getting out, these door hangers that we're talking about, because we hear it all the time, my cat was dumped somewhere. Thank you, chief.
All right, 12 point, 11 point two. Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I bring to you 11.2. Consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of one utility truck from Hayland Ford in the amount of $71,509.83 from the Water Capital Replacement Fund 644, and one utility truck from Steve Chevrolet in the amount of $71,730.90 from the Sewer Capital Replacement Fund 621, and authorize a surplus of a 1998 Chevrolet. Let's talk trucks today. Thought we talked a little bit about some trucks. Kind of wanted to give you guys a little bit of a background. Maybe you guys don't know how many trucks we have, or how many staff we have. So, you know, purchasing trucks for them, I kind of wanted to outline that. These right here, you'll look at them, you'll see those running around town. Those are called light-duty trucks. And if you see those, they'll have an L number, like an L24 or whatever. And that's just a light-duty truck. I bring that to your attention, let you know that in public works, there's, the supervisor will drive those, couple of park guys will clean trash with them, and there's not, there's about four of those in public works that we use. These are the trucks that we call a utility truck. We designate them with an H for heavy duty. So, you'll see H24 or whatever on them. These trucks are used by the maintenance personnel for any and all jobs, from large to small. Parts and tools are kept on these trucks to save time and money. I wanted to give you a little snapshot, that, you know, there's some stuff in our, in our toolboxes. We're not just, they're ready to go. So, the City of Oakdale has several divisions. For the sake of this presentation, I'll just focus on the water, the streets and sewer, and the parks. So, I just wanted to give you a quick snapshot. Water has five employees with four utility trucks. The streets and sewer division has 10 employees with four utility trucks. And the parks division has 15 employees with seven utility trucks. So, I just wanted to give you a perspective. It's not like we have, you know, not every person has a truck. In water, they almost do, because their, one guy goes and does a lot of stuff. Streets and sewer, sometimes they'll team up. They're doing paving or lifting heavy stuff, so there'll be more guys in a truck. In parks, those guys are just kind of, they do a bunch of everything. So, they have a hodgepodge of trucks, too. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a background snapshot, so I could show you what the need is. This is an example of the two trucks that we'll be purchasing, from Steve Chevrolet and from Hayland Ford. Staff received three bids. They were as follows. Hayland Ford came in at $68,509.83. Steve Chevrolet was $68,730.90. And Morgan Hill Dodge was off the chart. So, anyhow. Hayland Ford and Steve's were the lowest bidder. This bid also includes, if you notice, I asked in the, in the consider resolution for $71,000. There's also $3,000 put in for each one of these trucks to outfit it, to put the lights on it, to get the bed liners and the equipment that makes them safe, the strobe lights and everything that makes us seen in the public's eye. The fiscal impact here, this year's budget includes $180,000 for the purchase of the two trucks. There is no impact to the general fund. And I just wanted to also take the opportunity to introduce to a couple of new council members. You probably already know him. He's well-known around Oakdale. But Stan Milam is our fleet supervisor and facilities for public work supervisor. He came just to support. He wants to be able to be part of these types of presentations, telling council what's going on. He takes a hands-on approach with every vehicle we have. He's the one that, you know, he's checking the cops' cars. He's the one doing all the work on them. So, he has a vested interest in it. So, I also brought him if he had any questions about the fleet. If I cause questions to come up, please feel free to ask him.
Thank you.
This is the 1998 Chevrolet 2500 that we're asking to surplus. It has 99,178 miles on it. It's 26 years old. And we got our money out of that truck, I promise.
Does it still run?
Barely. Yeah, it'll drive off.
It's drivable, but it's, to the point now, where it's having issues that we can't, can't repair it without dumping quite a bit of money, too. Small related issues and things like that.
I feel like you're calling me old, Jeff.
I'm sorry.
You're calling me old. That was the year I was born.
Well, when you get 990,000 miles on you, you might be old, too. So, staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase the truck from Steve Chevrolet and from Hayland Ford, from Fund 644 and 621. Is there any questions?
Any questions from the public for Jeff? Any questions from council?
I do. What are you going to get when you surplus that? What will you get when you surplus that old Kaylee Gilbert-aged?
This, this will be a question for Stan.
So, what we deal with is, Councilmember Smith, is, on a truck that's that old, we can't get it to pass smog. Basically, it would have to have pretty much a new computer, a bunch of other components put into this truck to be able to pass smog. So, a lot of times, what we'll do is, we'll take it to the recycler, because we can't legally sell them.
My, my question is simple. Why don't we just keep it and have it as a spare vehicle?
Well, the issue with this particular truck is, we have put a lot of money into it to try to keep it in maintenance. And it seems like every time we turn around, there's more. It's becoming a money pit for us. So, what?
Is this, is this a comment?
No, no, this, this is not for Kaylee. Once we get to that point with the trucks...
If it's, if it's going to cost us more to keep it than it is to just throw it away, then I understand that. Okay.
And we've kind of, with chief and, you know, the other departments, we've kind of taken that vision throughout our fleet. We're trying to get everything up to date, where we have reliable vehicles. We're not worried about a guy breaking down out in the field or in one of our parks.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah. Do you think these two trucks is sufficient for what your guys need right now, or is there?
I would say that, I mean, we're probably going to look at our, we're actually working on that right now with the supervisor sitting down to look at the needs of the, of the public works department. We'll be bringing dump trucks to you in the future, because those things are cycling out on the tier, the California emissions, they're cycling out. So, we're going to have to, we have to get rid of perfectly good-running trucks, because they don't meet the standard. And it's very frustrating, but we don't take it lightly. Stan has been doing this job for three or four years now, and he's worked on the truck we're talking about surplusing way too much. And when he's working on that truck, he's not taking care, and I don't want to act like that truck's not important, but it's nowhere near as important as the time needs to be spent on a, on a police car, making, you know, doing brake checks and stuff. So, when we get to something that's that, it's just not worth having around. It's more of a liability than an asset. That's why we, we're not taking it lightly to get rid of them. So, the needs for trucks will be assessed again next year's budget. We're going to look at what we're going to need, and we'll come up with a plan. It may be a utility truck. It may be a flatbed. It could be dump trucks. So, but for right now, this will keep us rolling and keep us able to service all the areas we have.
So, you have a fund of $180,000. My simple math just says you've got $37,000 left over. You know, that rolls into next year? Or does that get sliced off and put somewhere else?
Yeah. So, so as part of our kind of renewal and replacement program, we have separate funds specifically for capital replacement. And so, those will stay where they need. So, we can, when we do other assessments, you know, when they come back and say, hey, we need this dump truck, you know, we'll, we'll pull those from that. So, it'll stay safeguarded for those types of purposes.
I just want to let the council know also, I'm currently, I'm working on a plan for us that's going to put us out like five years. So, we're going to have like a five-year replacement plan. So, we're going to have a list of what vehicles we have now, and we're going to have the mileages, and when we should be looking at, what year we should be looking at replacing those vehicles. So, that's something I'm trying to get implemented and get put together now, and we'll have that for everybody.
That, great. That was my next question is, I've, I mean, I see you guys running around all the time. The guys are always hustling and doing a great job. And a lot of the vehicles are older. So, how many other vehicles are pretty close to being at this point that we need to get rid of and bring in?
We've, we've got a few that are aging out. I think the oldest truck we have in fleet right now is like a 96 dump truck. And we're, we're going to be looking at getting those phased out.
Are those the dump trucks you were talking about that don't meet the California?
Yes, that's, that's one.
So, there's no retrofitting for those for the exhaust and California compliant stuff?
Not that old.
Not that old, yeah.
The one he's referring to, we have three. We have two Chevys that are going to, they're like '05 and an '0...
'07.
An '07.
Yeah.
Those are going to be cycled out because they're not tier four. Not yet, but they're, they're on the list.
They're on the way.
The one that we're talking about right now, the 96, it is, it has 35,000 miles on it as well. But it's, it's, it's a diesel motor, and it's, it's 96, I'm sure it's a tier one, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. So we're, I mean, anything that we can keep, Jared, if we, we can retrofit or anything like that. I've looked into the cost of the retrofitting. It's outrageous.
Yeah, it's not.
It's the cost of retrofitting versus replacing, you're halfway there.
Yeah.
If not, three quarters of the way there.
Yeah. That's what I was getting at. Like, you guys, they seem like they've hit their limit. You guys-
Yeah. We're, we're getting-
Done what you can with them.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Any other questions? All right, this is an action item.
I motion to approve item 11 dot 2.
I'll second that.
First and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Potassie?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios?
Yes, this item passes 5-0. Thank you, Colleen. All right, item 12 point 1.
Mayor and council, annually, we bring the, to you the recognized obligation payment schedule. Uh, in 2011, the state of California decided that, uh, to dissolve all of the redevelopment agencies. At that point in time, the, the Governor Brown, who had been mayor of, um, Oakland, knew how he had stripped the money from the redevelopment agency. And so he decided that he wanted the money up at the state level. And, and so he dissolved all of the redevelopment agencies. Uh, and, uh, at that point in time, redevelopment agencies could no longer perform any services. The, it began the process of winding down the redevelopment agencies and basically paying off the, the debt. Um, and so we are working through that process. The, the bonds, uh, on the redevelopment agency will pay off in June of 2036. So the successor agency, which is the winding entity, um, will continue through that time. And annually, we come before you, uh, provide you the schedule that we are required to put together for the, the annual, uh, schedule. Then it goes to the county, um, joint, uh, oversight board. And then it's submitted to the state of California by, uh, February 1st. Uh, and so what you have attached is the recognized obligation payment schedule. Uh, this is tax increment money. Uh, what it, tax increments were when the redevelopment agency was established, the values were frozen for all of the taxing entities. And then any increase in property values were used for the redevelopment agencies. And as, as we're going through and we're paying off these, the, a portion of that, the, the difference is now distributed to the various entities. Uh, the city's general fund, this last year, received about 400,000 of that. Uh, and so that's, that's what we have here is that schedule. Uh, so if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
All right, any questions from the public for Albert? Any questions from council?
And if you just wanna spend an exciting half hour, you can see the charts on page 71 through 74 of tonight's packet. Yeah.
All right, any questions? All right, this is an action item.
Motion to approve 12 dot 1.
I second that motion to approve dot 12 dot 1.
First and a second roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
I mean, we can go over those pages if you want to, Albert. It's like, yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Potassie?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios?
Yes, this passes 5-0. Thank you, Colleen. All right, city managers report. Any questions on that?
Yeah, no, Mayor. Um, just a reminder, we have our department reports in the packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions about those if there are any, but I have nothing further to add.
All right. Um, City Council, 14 point 1. I'd like to ask, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Christopher Smith to keep on for the next year. I wanna thank you for all that you do. And you're always there in the community helping. And, um, I just appreciate you.
Uh, thank you. I will keep on keeping on with the approval of the council.
All right, so this is an action item.
I motion to approve 14 dot 1.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second roll call, please.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Potassie?
No.
And Mayor Barrios?
Yes, this item passes 4-1. Thank you, Colleen. All right, item 14 point 2, City Council Member Local Appointments. So I went ahead and went through those and made adjustments from Councilmember Fred Smith and Bob Amroth. And, um, so are there any questions on anything? If not, this is an action item.
Motion to approve the board appointments, 14 dot, uh, 2.
I motion to, I second that motion to 14 point 2.
First and a second.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Potassie?
Yes.
Councilmember Kettering?
Yes.
And Mayor Barrios?
Yes, this item passes 5-0. Colleen will also get you guys set up a few.
I will add your orientation this week. Go get a list.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, so anything from, uh, anything from council?
I just wanna say, as far as those appointments, go print out the last two pages of the packet. 99 and 100 list all of our, uh, boards that we're on. Um, and that's it. Merry Christmas to everybody.
I just wanted to thank Oakdale and Richmond Society and A Small Town Christmas for bringing holiday joy to our city. Um, you've added such a magical touch to our city. And it does, it's such a free and awesome experience for families for all backgrounds to come and experience. So thank you so much.
Thank you. It's definitely a big event.
Yes.
And, um, and, uh, a lot of players in that, a lot of teamwork, that's for sure. Thank you.
My family really enjoyed it. The boys loved driving around town and having all the extra, like, on the way to the gym today, they saw Santa and the reindeer at the OID and all the other places where we haven't. We've always had a good Christmas feel in town, but these last few, I mean, rock and roll, you guys did a great job. All of the volunteers and people involved.
Thank you.
My family definitely enjoyed it.
Thank you. And it was nice. I was riding together on the float, brought a little snow to Oakdale, a little music, a little snow, a really, really great time.
That was a huge turnout.
Yes, the biggest turnout ever.
Good on you guys.
Yes, and I wanna thank the police department for being there for us. Uh, and we can only do better next year, right, chief?
More fireworks.
But you guys did, not on your part, our part. We, yeah.
More fireworks on our float.
Yes, yes, yes.
And, and, and one last time. This guy right here is retiring.
Yep, Tim Teigen.
Thank you, Tim.
Chief Teigen. Um, yes, I just wanna thank everybody for joining us in the Small Town Christmas festivities, from the lighting of the Christmas tree, the parade, very first Christmas concert. I thank Tammy for putting on the downtown Oakdale, Tracy with Mama's Closet for First Street, our city that stepped up, and, uh, Jeff Gervell, your team, chief, Ryan, just everybody that steps up to put that together, to make sure that we're all safe. So I wanna say thank you for that. And I wanna say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. We will see you Monday, January 6th, right here at the Oakdale Chamber, City Council Chamber, 7:00 PM. Meeting adjourned.